Getting all the comments and letters. My recommendation would be as the governor and and the legend, as the governor goes through the process that, you know, the people to contact are really the governor's office and the folks up at Hartford to push your thoughts around the current mandate that's set to expire. So with that, yeah, we will start out with public, those folks that are in the auditorium, and then we'll move to our friends who are on Zoom. It looks like we have about thirty-nine folks on Zoom. Not sure that's, everyone has their hand raised, but we'll go there. So we'll start to the right here. And again, Michelle, do you want to go over? Yeah, thank you.
Good evening. For participants and persons, please reach the chair for his medical call each participant to the microphone on either side. For participants via Zoom, please click the raise and option. The facilitator will acknowledge and unmute each participant. For all participants, please state their name and address for the record log. Each participant will have up to three minutes to comment. We will start in person.
So we'll start to the right here. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Joanna Walsh, co-chair of the Council of Darien School Parents. I live at seventeen Pleasant Street and have two children at Henley and one at Middlesex.
I'm Lori Olson, the other co-chair of the CDSP. I live at sixteen Little Brook Road North. I have three, I have three children, two DHS graduates and one currently at DHS. We would like to begin tonight in review. In 2017, CDSP co-chairs said for years, CDSP has been covering many of the same things at these hearings. The need for transparency, accountability, differentiation, to meet all learners at their level, smoother and more thoughtful transition, planning between school levels and communication to parents. In 2016, CDSP co-chairs also said, as a parent body, we value excellence, but for years have settled on mediocrity, Band-Aid solutions, and following where other districts have led. They continued, our teachers and administrators are the foundation upon which success is built. We are taking you on this walk down memory lane because many parents across the district feel we are on the edge of a precipice. Are we moving forward? Are we evolving and adapting as the world around us changes? Or are we relitigating settled matters? Are we doing what's best for our students? There are four thousand seven hundred and twenty-eight students in the Darien District. Does this budget with its proposed cuts truly enable us to meet the needs of all of them? In the last ten years, Darien Public Schools has had five superintendents. In 2019, the board hired Dr. Adley. He brought with him a desire and determination to learn everything he could about our district, what was working, what was not, what we were missing, and what we needed. In partnership with many stakeholders, he developed a strategic plan, which the board unanimously adopted.
Now we've reached the implementation stage and members are abandoning ship before we've even left the dock. Instead of using the foundation Darien has built to propel us in the right direction, we keep hitting pause, stop, and rewind. We don't even give the superintendent a chance to move us forward. In fact, some members of this board want to move us backwards. Indiscriminate budget cuts that are not discussed in public at the board table or that lack proper analysis will have a detrimental impact on all of our children. Again, this is something CDSP flagged eight years ago. Please don't make us get up here again and repeat what we've been saying. We applaud the board for asking questions, debating issues, and examining initiatives. Board members are elected to be the stewards of our children's education and oversight is a necessary part of that. But throwing things down on the tracks to stop everything in its place is not good stewardship. It's just stagnation. Our children are stuck between stations waiting for the tracks to be cleared. At this rate, they'll be waiting a very, very long time. We would like to close tonight by thanking and expressing our gratitudes for our teachers, principals, administration, and all who work to make Darien Schools, public schools better. Thank you for giving of yourselves so tirelessly. Please remember, schools exist for children. We expect the Board of Education to put our students' needs at the forefront of every decision.
Thank you. You're at time. Thank you for your comments tonight. We'll move over next podium.
Hi, I'm Stephanie Marr at forty-nine Christie Hill Road. I'm reading this on behalf of Leela Buck June, who is homesick tonight. She lives at twelve DuBois Street, and Leela is one of the co-chairs of the Darien High School Parents Association. On behalf of the DHSPA, we would like to speak in support of several items in the proposed budget that directly impacts students. We strongly support the addition of the grant-funded school psychologists at DHS as there is an increased need for social emotional support. Four psychologists provide valuable continuity, allowing each psychologist to stay with a specific grade for all four years, similar to the model currently used in our guidance department. We also support the addition of the SSD coordinator. Testing accommodations and the number of students taking tests have increased significantly. In May 2021, four hundred and forty-five students took nine hundred and forty-three AP exams, and that doesn't include PSAT, SAT, or any student with testing accommodations through an IEP or 504 plan. This small four thousand dollar site position would allow the director of guidance to focus on more impactful student-related activities rather than spending hours coordinating standardized and AP testing. We are in support of additional coaches for freshman field hockey and girls rugby. Currently, freshman football, freshman boys lacrosse, and freshman boys soccer each have two assistant coaches. We believe freshman girls should have the same opportunities to participate in their sports. Additionally, we support reinstating the China Exchange Program. This important DHS program helps to increase our students' global and cultural awareness, promoting diversity through immersive interactions with different cultures, which corresponds to our strategic plan goals. We have received considerable feedback from parents regarding the bring-your-own-device proposal and are most, and most are in favor of some type of choice. This applies in particular to students who currently use their iPads, as well as to rising ninth graders, who are not yet familiar with how different devices might be used in various classes. Perhaps a modified program can be implemented where students who do not use their iPads can return them, saving money over the long term on replacement iPads. Another proposed change to the budget that affects DHS families is the shift of senior parking fees to the Board of Ed. Currently, all senior activities and events are covered by those funds. With this change, the eleven thousand dollars would become out-of-pocket expenses for parents. Finally, we would like to request that the board revisit the two-mile radius policy, bus radius policy, since the bus contract is to be renegotiated in 2023. Two miles is a long distance to carry a heavy backpack, especially in the dark or rain. This change would minimally affect the budget while significantly improving student safety, since only two bus routes would be added if the radius was changed to one and a half miles. In conclusion, we ask for the support of these initiatives because they directly support our students and uphold Darien's excellence in education. We ask each member of the board to remember it's about the students, that our schools exist for children. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments this evening. We'll go over to my right.
Good evening. I'm Antoinette Coles, and I live at five Hillside Court. I am the other co-chair of the Darien High School Parents Association. Our schools are the best of the best and our town's biggest asset. Darien High School has achieved its number-one ranking because of our amazing teachers, administrators, and the continued support of the Board of Ed. Yet we are saddened by the acts of hate and vandalism in our building. As an organization, we are committed to the work of diversity, equity, and inclusion, and support the efforts of the administration. Our students want their school to be a place where everyone feels safe and appreciated, where differences enrich us all. It's time we address these issues through education. As stated in the district's vision of the graduate, our school's mission is to inspire a love of learning in all students, so they develop as critical thinkers and innovative creators who contribute to the world with integrity and purpose beyond themselves. But we cannot do this without our exceptional teachers, administrators, parents, and Board of Ed members working together. On that note, we would like to address some of the administrative positions that were added to the Board of Ed cut lists that directly impact DHS students. We encourage the board to discuss and invest efficiencies in the budget, but not at the risk of sacrificing our superior schools. As we have seen with so many decisions made by the board over the years, it takes a great deal of time, debate, and research before a responsible vote can be made. First, we believe that three assistant principals are appropriate, given the size of DHS student body and our current staffing alliance with the staffing ratios for this position at other DIRK A schools. Second, our department chairs were put in place beginning in 2017 to address inconsistencies and to better align the transition from middle school to high school. The department chairs devote their time and attention to the students by helping the teachers build consistency across content and grade level to better deliver curriculum. Additionally, an athletic director is essential to oversee all of our top-notch sports teams. A technology director is a crucial position to facilitate and integrate technology as a tool for learning in all our schools. In conclusion, we respectfully request that before any budget vote is held regarding these positions, the board takes the time to request additional information from the administration about these well-established and important roles. This feedback has never been publicly sought during the entire budget process thus far, nor was any opportunity given for Board of Ed discussion on these proposed cuts. Darien High School is ranked top in the state for a reason. We would like to be able to continue our town's long tradition of academic excellence. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening. We'll move to the left podium, my left.
Good evening. My name is Robin Nelson, and I live at fifty-one Arrowhead Way. I am the CDSP rep for Middlesex and DHS. On behalf of the MPA, I will be speaking in support of the Middlesex budget, which includes some exciting new programs that will not only expand our students' learning, but better prepare them for the transition to high school. The first is Genius Hour, an innovative new proposal to give all our students a chance to explore a topic that they choose to learn about. Genius Hour builds critical independent thinking, research, and real-world presentation skills. Additionally, this program aligns with the high school ASR three-year elective course opportunity. By using flex periods only once per month, Genius Hour will not impede our teachers' ability to deliver other curriculum modules like SEL or hamper students' ability to complete homework. Moreover, this relatively low nine thousand dollar investment provides a high return in student motivation and engagement. We would also like to thank the Foreign Language Department Chair and Administration for the proposed introduction of Mandarin at Middlesex, which fulfills many years of feedback from students and parents. Offering Mandarin in middle school aligns with our high school curriculum and other DIRK A schools, while increasing our students' global and cultural perspectives. It is important to note that much like the continued evolution of our K through twelve Spanish curriculum, the department chair role will be critical to this three-year rollout in terms of ensuring appropriate curriculum progression from middle school to high school, and potentially adding AP Mandarin in future years, similar to our Spanish and French high school curriculum. Another important priority is our students' safety and security. This is why we support adding a second campus monitor, given the size of the school. This addition would enable coverage of the school's three floors plus the front security desk, and would bring the student-to-monitor ratio down by two hundred. We also support adding unified intramural sports at Middlesex. The Unified Skills Clinics have grown to sixty students. Introducing intramural sports would expand the program to three seasons and allow for competitions with other schools. Finally, we wish to voice our support for continued DEI efforts, especially in light of the acts of vandalism and hate which have occurred at Middlesex. While there may be differing views among the parent community on specific initiatives, we support the district's investment in building an inclusive, equitable, and diverse learning environment for all our children, and invite parents' continued involvement and feedback. We appreciate the opportunity to speak in support of the Middlesex proposed budget. Thank you for your efforts to ensure that Darien Schools maintain their reputation for excellence.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Good evening. My name is Jackie Nevin, and I live at forty-seven Phillips Lane. I am the CDSP rep for homeschool where I have three students. I am speaking tonight on behalf of all five elementary school PTOs. These remarks were written collaboratively with input from Henley, Holmes, Oxbridge, Royal, and Tokany. As you will see, although we are five schools with individual communities, we are committed to equity among all our buildings. We support the zero-point-two full-time employee addition at Henley for a PE teacher. The elementary schools are already stretched past their limit. In the past few weeks, administrators in multiple buildings have, have had to teach PE classes. With the addition of the section at Henley next year, the situation becomes completely untenable. Without this zero-point-two FTE, some schools would have to double up to hold more than one class at a time, with both classes sometimes sharing the gym if the common room isn't available. In a district known for excellence, PE classes taught by administrators or in half a gym are unacceptable. We also support the addition of the zero-point-five FTE paraprofessionals at both Holmes and Oxbridge. Paraprofessionals provide vital instructional, behavioral, and other support services to students in the classroom. It is important to ensure that our schools are properly staffed to meet the needs of all students. Our parent communities support a robust elementary curriculum to provide a strong foundation for our youngest learners. Supplementation of the K to two literacy program to reflect the advancements in phonics are important resources needed to achieve continued excellence in our elementary education. Elementary parents continue to prioritize the need for advanced math and expectancy, expediency in the process, to add that offering so that current students can benefit as soon as possible. We also support the addition of one FTE to the Oxbridge custodial staff due to the thirty percent increase in space in the new building. We are thankful the administration is addressing the needs of our facilities. Finally, we wish to reiterate the support for DEI work at both the elementary school level and district-wide. Henley and Oxbridge have had outstanding experiences with their teachers and residents, and we wish for the district to continue participation. Unfortunately, we do not feel as appropriate to comment tonight on other specific proposed initiatives as we cannot find a consensus, consensus among parents. However, the district, however, the district decides to bring DEI work to Darien in the future, it must continue. Our five PTO DEI communities formed when parents came to us and asked us, their PTOs, to create these groups. We keep our school experiences equitable. Why wouldn't we want to make sure our individual student experiences are equitable too? Thank you for your time.
Thank you for speaking this evening. To my left, thank you.
Good evening. My name is Lisa Sruce, and I live at twelve Rings End Road. I'm the parent representative on the CDSP Special Education Subcommittee, which includes members from all building levels and every school within DPS. We are pleased to see that the administration is continually looking to improve the student experience in Darien, and the constant reevaluation of appropriate staffing and robust programming are paramount to ensuring positive student outcomes. Proposed staffing additions at the elementary and high school levels are necessary to meet the needs of our special learners. Paraprofessionals play a critical role in the general education classroom, assisting both students and teachers. They are essential to the success of all students and assist in their ability to access the curriculum within the classroom setting. Further, they support the district's goal of inclusion of diverse learners. At the high school, the administration has identified a need for an additional speech language, speech and language pathologist, special ed teacher, and school psychologist to support the increased level of support needed by our students. Darien High School cannot deliver appropriate services without these professionals. And the addition of the school psychologists will have a meaningful impact on the school's ability to aid all students who are dealing with more issues than ever due to two years of pandemic-related disruptions and troubling incidents of intolerance that continue to have a negative impact on their social and emotional health, as we've heard multiple times this year from students. We've also heard from our high school students, administrators, teachers, and parents of the desire to create a community of acceptance regardless of race, religion, sexuality, and gender. The special education community looks forward to the implementation of the proposed DEI curriculum, as we hope that that progress will also improve the acceptance of our neurodiverse students. We have serious concerns about the proposed elimination of the grades six through twelve department chairs. This is a detrimental step backwards and will have a negative impact on our middle and high school teachers and ultimately our students. The students who have currently benefited from a meaningfully designed and consistently implemented curriculum across subjects and course levels, including the comprehensive classes offered at DHS that are modified to meet student needs while aligning with the subject department's curriculum. Finally, literacy skills are a topic that ignites conversation within our committee across all members, regardless of whether they're parents of young elementary students or seniors. Improving the reading curriculum will not only strengthen young learners' performance in elementary school, but position them to be successful throughout the coming years in secondary-level education and their professional endeavors. Nothing strong can be built upon a weak foundation. We appreciate the time you have given to listening to our concerns, and we look forward to continued collaboration among administration, educators, parents, and you, the Board of Education, elected in good faith to represent the best interests of education in our town. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Good evening. Carrie Momaka, twenty-four Salt Box Lane, with Diane Urban, ten Crane Road, and Washeen Beckarelli, twenty-nine Bailey Avenue. We are here tonight in coordination with CDSP. In the fall of 2020, each of the PTOs launched its individual diversity, equity, and inclusion committees. They reached out to their school communities through their wires and invited parents to join in sharing views and perspectives, and to work together in support of DEI efforts. These PTO DEI committees are led by thoughtful and collaborative parents who love our town, love our schools, and care about enriching all of our students' education and providing resources and support to the many parents who have, who have expressed an interest in the DEI topic. Over the past two years, the feedback we received from many parents has been that they were encouraged and excited that DPS was committed to the DEI discussion and this work. Tonight, we are speaking on behalf of many parents across our schools who believe that celebrating our students' varied backgrounds gives strength, depth, and security to our community of learners and is foundational to all other aspects of learning. We're here to support the efforts to create a community that welcomes and embraces the full range of human differences, diversity, as well as advocates for and advances opportunities and outcomes for all in our community. Equity and inclusion is how we recognize, respect, and welcome all differences. To that end, we support the Darien Public School's stated district goals and plans toward DEI, and are committed to providing constructive resources, peer touchpoints, and positive opportunities for our students and parents in collaboration with our school staff.
We are asking you to remember each DPS student, alumnus, and staff member who has pleaded with you for change. We urge you to recall how critically important it is that students feel represented and included in their learning experiences, and that school staff are prepared to support them. We want you to remember how hopeful and proud we were when this Board of Ed approved the strategic plan less than a year ago. At your last Board of Ed meeting, you voted to approve the transfer of funds to expand the scope of the DEI consultant's work, and we are grateful that you are taking the needed action to realize the goals outlined in the strategic plan. However, this proposed budget cut signaled to us that not all Board of Ed members support this critical work. It is a worthwhile investment to do the necessary work for the benefit of all DPS students. We need to be able to discuss and collaborate around this topic at a community level without trepidation. A consultant will productively facilitate that conversation. A monetary commitment to DEI for the school year only assumes a quick fix. With, without ongoing support and collaboration, how do we expect to deliver on the progress that is so needed and desired? We will continue to be reactionary instead of proactive. This work needs ongoing, needs to be ongoing, and will take years. Why not ensure that we are well-equipped to have these conversations here as a community, rather than delivering our students into the world without sufficient preparation?
I'm sorry, you're at time. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Stacy TA, and I live at ten Clocks Lane.
My name is Deborah Ritchie, and I live at sixteen Stony Brook Road South. We are the Budget Co-Chairs for CDSP. First, we would like to thank Dr. Adley, Mr. Roodel, and all the people and the administration staff that were helping preparation and presentation of the fiscal year twenty-three budget. On behalf of our students, we would like to ask questions regarding the almost two million dollars in proposed cuts. Hopefully, our questions can be addressed this evening. Last week, members of the Board of Education proposed an almost fifty percent cut to the superintendent's proposed budget increase. While some of the proposed items have been discussed in the past three weeks, most have not. The proposed cuts to district FTEs have not been mentioned during the budget deliberations or in conversations leading up to the budget discussions. These cuts would reduce the proposed Board of Ed budget increase from three point nine percent to two point one percent. Just for factual check, the inflation rate is seven percent currently. To those proposing the cuts, what are the cuts meant to achieve? What would the direct impact to our students be with the elimination of the athletic director at DHS, department chairs, the DHS assistant principal, the director of technology? There have been many discussions about curriculum over the past year. How would the elimination of department chairs impact the delivery of our curriculum? The feedback on these roles has been positive since their implementation. In Dr. Adley's memorandum in tonight's packet, he states that if the district provides athletics to students, it is required to have someone in the administrators' union with administrator's coaching and administrator certification. Without an athletic director at DHS, what is the plan to fulfill this requirement and ensure the safety of our athletes and equity amongst our teams?
What will the impact to our DHS students with the elimination of DHS assistant principal? Other DIRK A schools have one administrator per grade. Why are only three needed at DHS? Can we manage a dynamic and innovative technology plan without a director of technology? What is the reasoning for the proposed ten percent salary cut for our superintendent, Dr. Adley? An ad requires explanation as well. How will the addition of Open Gov have a positive impact to our students and staff? Is a hundred thousand dollar computer program more important than a department chair, AP, or athletic director? If drastic cuts are to save money, please note that open choice is a revenue driver, and removing that program from the budget causes our costs to increase. To the administration, how would this reduction to the proposed budget impact delivery of education in Darien? Can our district function without department chairs and AP at DHS, an athletic director at DHS, and a director of technology, or the funding associated with these positions? To all members of the Board of Ed, we ask that you perform your due diligence. Are you confident that these cuts will not impact the delivery of education to our children? Do you feel the district can easily absorb this reduction without impacting academic excellence? We support all efforts to achieve efficiencies in the delivery of education.
Thank you. You are at time. Thank you very much for speaking. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Good evening. John Dunn, one seventy-five Raymond Street. I'd like to briefly discuss the facts around Hartford's Open Choice program. Open Choice guarantees bigger class sizes in our elementary schools. Open Choice guarantees resources being taken away from Darien students and being given to Norwalk students. Open Choice guarantees more cost for Darien taxpayers. Open Choice guarantees going against the wishes of approximately one thousand of your constituents. Open Choice is the wrong choice for Darien. Look what our students and our children have been through over the last two years of COVID. Extended remote learning, quarantines, self-isolation, wearing masks for seven to eight hours per day, social distancing, activities and school events changed or canceled, eating in hallways because there isn't enough space in the cafeteria. This has been incredibly disruptive to students of all ages, and we still don't know what the long-lasting impacts will be. Darien students need to get back on track socially, emotionally, and academically. It is essential for our elected Board of Ed members to get life back to normal for them, rather than considering wide-ranging material changes to our public schools. Open Choice should not be a priority. The priority should be focusing on the return to normal for Darien students. On top of this, hundreds of new apartments are being built in Darien that will certainly increase school enrollment over the next few years. This is in addition to the large influx of families to town as a result of COVID. These events will increase enrollment that are occurring while four out of five of our Darien elementary schools are currently using portable units. Why would the board even consider bringing in non-resident students that would further increase class sizes when so many of our own students are in trailers? The administration and the board should be focused on getting Darien students in permanent classrooms and all portables removed from school grants, and not focused on making things worse. Our Board of Ed members are elected to serve the best interests of Darien, students, parents, teachers, and taxpayers. I encourage all of them to do this by committing to get life back to normal for our children. Hartford's Open Choice program is the wrong choice for Darien. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for speaking this evening. Go ahead, sir. Thank you.
Thanks, Duke. Good evening. David Oat, twenty-two Circle Road, twenty-year resident, parent of two children that went through the Darien High School school system. I want to state for the record tonight my opposition to the cuts to the superintendent's budget, specifically Board Member David Brown and John Seeny's line items. Before I get to the long-term potential impact of the cuts, I want to read a quote from former Board of Finance Chairman and current selectman, John Zagrotzky, from May of 2021. In response to raising the first selectman's salary by five point five percent, Mr. Zagrotzky stated, and I quote, "After all, it's a full-time job, and reasonable compensation helps ensure that we attract good candidates to Darien who will work hard for us." Let me emphasize that last part. We want compensation to attract good candidates who work hard for us. I agree with Mr. Zagrotzky's underlying premise. Darien should continually strive to attract talented people to work hard for our students and our community. The superintendent, the principals, teachers, and staff are all critical components of the success of Darien's crown jewel, the school district. However, unlike the first select person's role that can only be filled by a Darien resident, Darien competes for educational talent against districts not just from Connecticut, but New Jersey and New York. The cuts proposed by David Brown and John Seeny result in limited savings to taxpayers on a per-household basis, and sends a clear signal not only to our current school staff, but also potential hires that Darien does not value hard work, educational pedigree, and experience. Put yourself in the staff's position. Most people in this room would question their employer's support and pursue alternative options if their firm acted like certain members on the Board of Ed. What Mr. Brown and Seeny appear to believe, based on the cuts, is that educating our children should be quote-unquote "value engineer," code for projects to projects on the cheap. That same philosophy also explains the persistent presence of portables at several of our elementary schools that should have been addressed years ago, while the high school was built with insufficient classroom and other spaces like the cafeteria to meet the needs of students, all to save a buck, only to have long-term costs increase mag- to meet the needs of students, all to save a buck, only to have long-term costs increase materially. If Mr. Brown and Seeny's goal is to financially kneecap the district and members of the staff, I'm confident that the message was sent. The net effect of removing the three largest proposed cuts from the budget saves each Darien household just $150 per year in property taxes, while reducing morale, educational outcomes, and in the long term raises the risk that Darien is a less desirable place to purchase real estate. Proponents of cutting the budget argue that lower property taxes are desirable for new home buyers. However, many communities in Nassau and Westchester Counties with higher tax rates have demonstrably better educational outcomes, faster appreciating asset values, and notably shorter commute to Manhattan, key factors that attract buyers. If Darien schools are impacted, it is not a leap to expect homebuyers to shift interest toward these communities that have better schools and better appreciation potential, not to mention shorter commutes, a key quality of life after COVID. If Mr. Brown and Seeny have their way with these cuts, it will likely impact long-term values post-COVID. If the average Darien home price drops just 1% because of these cuts.
You're at time. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to ask the Speaker a question.
No.
Point of order. It's a public hearing, sir.
No. I've asked that. That's counsel.
It's a public hearing.
We're listening to the folks this evening.
Can I ask the question after?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi.
Hi. Thank you.
I am Amy Daniel, 83, Locust Hill Road. I have a ninth-grade son at the high school and a fifth-grade daughter at Tokne. I first want to thank all of you guys for the many, many, many hours that you spend on behalf of our children and our schools, the Board, and also the administration, and I have to add also the CDSP and the many representatives that serve for them. I'm disheartened to see funding of the DEI initiatives on the proposed cut list. In the short term, Darien's inability to embrace DEI practices could hurt our children. They risk not having the opportunity to see, learn from, and grow by exposure to different perspectives, by not knowing classmates and community members that aren't as well-off economically, aren't as homogeneous, and aren't as white as what they see now, by staying in our Darien bubble. Professionally, I oversee marketing for a local education group that operates three schools as well as college consulting and day and boarding advisory services. I can tell you firsthand that Darien's possible resistance to DEI initiatives is in direct opposition to what is happening in the real world. In the real world, colleges are reluctant to accept students from affluent towns who may not be able to play well with others. They are looking for students who have been exposed to the diverse backgrounds that they are cultivating on their college campuses. Supplemental essay questions at many colleges demonstrate the premium that is placed on diversity. College preparatory schools in Fairfield and Westchester Counties have embraced DEI initiatives for years as they have widely across the country. This is not new work to them. Why should we care what private schools are doing? We should care because the students that are applying from private schools are applying for the same spots as our Darien High School seniors. Not funding this DEI work puts Darien students at a distinct disadvantage. NIASC, which as you know provides accreditation for all Darien schools, requires that the school community provides a safe, positive, respectful, and inclusive culture that ensures equity and honors diversity and identity of thought. It's their first standard for accreditation as a public school. That's the number-one thing that they ask for all schools in their organization to look at. Equity, diversity, and inclusion are core values in our strategic plan. I implore the Board to fund the proposed DEI initiatives accordingly. It's time to burst our Darien bubble and make strides to shed the upsetting nickname of Ariandarian that's used by outsiders to our community. If you haven't heard of that nickname, that is part of the Darien bubble. Please don't stand in the way of this much-needed progress. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking this evening.
Amy Zerby, Nine More House Drive. Transparency. Transparency has been a buzzword in the school community for a few years. Transparency on curriculum was widely discussed from September through the beginning of November of last year. Tonight, you are going to hear about transparency of the budget process. Between Super Saturday and January 25th, there were four Board of Ed meetings in which the Board of Ed and the community members could address items in the budget, yet not one person mentioned important line items such as Department Chairs, a DHS Assistant Principal, consultants, an Athletic Director, and dues and membership fees. Ironically, the people pounding their fists the loudest in the fall demanding transparency are the same ones who proposed these cuts. It appears that transparency is only important when it is expedient. I believe that these cuts were both personal and political in nature and will damage our children's educational experience. As you may recall, prior to the appointment of Department Chairs, teachers served as curriculum monitors at Middlesex and curriculum coordinators at DHS. They had to divide their time and efforts between curriculum and classes. Parents frequently complained about teaching inconsistencies and transition issues from Middlesex to DHS. Since the hiring of Department Chairs, I have seen greater consistency across class sections regarding assessments, homework, and projects. We have also seen Department Chairs advocate for and complete initiatives such as overhauling our science curriculum to be in line with the next-generation science standards, expanding our world language program to add Mandarin at Middlesex and AP languages at the high school, proposing DHS trips abroad, and improving STEM at Middlesex with Project Lead the Way and new STEM classes. Furthermore, our Department Chairs are able to evaluate and train staff, which is particularly helpful with new hires. The Department Chair's ability to focus their attention on all students and all teachers in their respective departments enables the Darien schools to continue on a path of excellence. I'm sure that some of you are aware of the new attacks on Open Choice on social media and the continued spread of misinformation. As you listen to public comment regarding Open Choice, please consider the facts that you have learned over the past year on this important initiative. Say no to "not in my town." Say no to "separate but equal." Say yes to Open Choice. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Please go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, Susie Flaherty, Six Lake Drive. Thank you so much for being here and thank you so much for all your hard work. I really, I've been so impressed lately. So I would like to discuss the Open Choice options on the budget. Many of the questions about Open Choice were answered at the last meeting, and I won't waste your time by repeating what has already been debunked and what has already been clarified. The public certainly has the right to bring up the same questions and concerns that have already been addressed if they missed it, but I am confident that you are clear on the answers and that you have already been given and will proceed with facts as your guide. Moving forward, a goal has been set to make this community and our school system more diverse. Darien has made some progress towards that goal. Participating in Open Choice with the 47 other Connecticut school districts will keep us on the right track to meeting that goal. Many of the concerns people seem to have about Open Choice come from a place of uncertainty. That nagging question, "What if?" is always plaguing us. It's hard to get past those fears and embrace change, especially when our kids are involved. But if we truly want to see a more diverse and welcoming Darien, we should trust the facts and believe in ourselves. The success of the Open Choice Program speaks for itself. I want to speak for Darien. I believe in the Darien Public School System. I believe in the heart of Darien and that it is strong. I say we do this for the Darien kids just as much as we do it for the Norwalk kids. This is a handful of kindergarteners. We can handle this. We can be better and involved simply by making space for these children to come to school here and just be kids with our kids. I actually envy these five- and six-year-olds. My husband and I have had the benefit of a Darien Public Schools education and so have my children. But these kindergarteners will benefit from more because they will get all that Darien has to offer plus the educational advantages that come from a diverse classroom. They will go off into the world with an experience that neither me nor my children have ever really had. So I urge you to move forward with Open Choice. Thank you.
Thank you for speaking this evening. No one on the left. We stay with the right.
Alicia Skinner, Cliff Avenue. First, I would just like to say that I support diversity. I did most of my schooling in the Stanford Public School System since moving to the US. I think that the Stanford School System is equal in terms of diversity to Norwalk. I went through the ESL program and then went on to take honors and AP courses before going on to university. The reason I am saying this is because we're painting a picture that Darien is coming in to help kids from Norwalk, that if somehow we don't do the Open Choice Program, that those kids are going to be left behind and that they won't have the same opportunities for the same future. That is just not true. I came to this country without being able to speak English. I'm a byproduct of the Stanford Public School System. Many of my classmates, myself included, graduated and went on to some of this nation's best universities. The framework at these schools exist to turn out great students. There are AP classes, there's honors classes, and ESL for foreign students like myself. If a student has the desire and the will to learn, you can graduate from the likes of Norwalk or Stanford school systems and go on to achieve great things. The other misconception that people have who oppose open is that people who oppose Open Choice somehow don't want to allow those people into our school system. Again, I think that is not true. If Open Choice was available to kids in New Canaan or Greenwich, I would still be against Darien adopting Open Choice. It is not the prudent thing to do right now. Over the last two years, lots of education has been lost and our students' lives continue to be disrupted, and our kids need to be prioritized at this time. I also don't believe that Darien meets the criteria for Open Choice. Open Choice, as presented by Senator Haskell, would allow suburban school districts with a declining enrollment to voluntarily offer seats to students from overcrowded urban districts. Darien does not meet this definition. We do not have declining enrollment. We've had an influx of families that have moved to this town from New York City. We have 280 condos coming online in the near future. It is not prudent right now to take on additional children from outside of our district if we do not know how much space we have in our classrooms for the residents of this town. I think everyone can agree that as class sizes grow and become larger, the education will suffer. I keep hearing over and over in these meetings how wonderful it would be for Darien to be a leader, specifically when it comes to implementing Open Choice. I think what would be wonderful instead is for Darien to be a leader and at the forefront of pushing Hartford to give us back local control over our schools and for our kids' lives to revert to normal so that they can come out of the school system socially, emotionally, and educationally prepared for college. I think that would make Darien a leader. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking this evening.
My name is Natasha Toma. I live at 6 McLaren Road South. I'm speaking as an individual. I happen to be a member of the Executive Board of the PTO at Royal as the Special Ed Rep. I have attended four to five in-person meetings a month since the beginning of September. I have read through countless documents. I have been in these meetings. I've requested that the CDSP make their meetings available via Zoom and increase the transparency. I did not see that as a budget line item come up tonight. My voice was not represented by the comments that were made tonight. In fact, the comments that were made tonight were so far off of the budget, except for the woman who represented the elementary PTOs who actually did speak about specific line items, that I have to say, the CDSP does not represent me. And there are other parents that feel that way too. The transparency that they talk about, and I can go dig down into the documents.
Again, this is not a conversation about CDSP. It's specific to the budget.
It's a public hearing, and they've used this forum to push a political agenda, and it's very transparent. So please let me finish my comments.
It's specific to the budget. The CDSP has no line item budget. So if you have questions specific to the budget, thank you.
Open Choice. We do not have the facts that Open Choice, what the revenue impact will be. We know that it's ill-timed. We know that it's not an either-or. We are either exclusionary or we care about people outside of the district. But it was represented by a budget chair that Open Choice is a revenue driver. That is not a fact. That does not represent the truth. And I have to say that tonight. I had no intention of making comments, but this is beyond the pale.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Hi, I'm Linda Rowe of 26 Berenger Road. I wanted to speak kind of what Natasha just said on the comment that Open Choice was a positive financial gain for the town. That is just not true. You know, they say, "Add a couple chairs here in the elementary school. No big deal. We have open spots available." Let's talk about when we get to the middle school. Simple fact, 16 kids is an entire classroom. So you can't sit here and say that there's no financial impact to our Darien community and Darien students. All these parents here today don't want all of these cuts in the budget. Well, I agree. I don't want cuts in the budget either. I want the best school system for my kids. And so to sit here and say that Open Choice is not going to have a cost is silly. So take 16 students. Take 16 students. The cost to educate a student here is, we'll just take for simple numbers, $20,000. It's more than that. But take $20,000. Take those 16 students. Call 17,000 times that for middle and high school. You have 272,000. Times seven years is 1,904,000, and that's without special education. 13% of our student body has special education. Special education student costs 37,000 here in Darien. So take 13% of those and see how much that costs. These costs keep adding up and adding up and adding up, and these are just simple numbers. If you start taking those 16 students and adding 16 students every year, just look at middle and high school where you can simply say 16 students is entire class. You have to hire an educator. You have English. You have math. You have social studies. You have science. So how could this not be a cost? It's a cost. Take high school. You have four years in high school. 16 kids. Our ratio is 11 to 1 in the high school. Just for the four years, if you take 16 kids each year, that's 64 kids extra in our high school. That's 5.82 teachers needed to keep our 11-1 ratio. So please do the math and simple facts. There will be a cost to our kids because we don't have an endless budget here in Darien. We'd all love to have an endless budget. I want everything for our kids. We all do. We all want what's best for our children. But to say there's no financial impact when people are sitting here saying we're going to cut kids' iPads or we're going to cut this, we want to cut this program, we have to cut something. It's not an endless budget. And so this is going to be a cost, and we don't have the room right now. We have portables. I can't even believe we're bringing this into discussion right now when we can't even have the room in our school systems for our own kids. So I say no to Open Choice, and I hope everyone else does too.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. I'm Laura Pesch Gray. I live at 131 Holmes Avenue. Open Choice, as many of the people expressed tonight, I'm not in favor of, and it's not the right choice for Darien. I'm not going to go into repeating what everyone else has said, but I will say that I do support and recommend a smaller amount of dollars put towards the ABC program and do it in a much smaller scale. Since we have almost 300 housing units, many of those housing units, we have no idea what bedroom capacity, which we don't really understand or can't really estimate the number of children that are going to be influx into our school system. I think this is more of a practical solution which has already had a proven track record. For those of you who don't know, a Better Chance is a nonprofit organization with the goal of helping more talented young people of color to become well-educated by attending high-achieving boarding day and public schools in the United States. Why is ABC a more suitable fit? It offers a selective process while weak as Darien residents can still achieve and increase that diversity that we're so interested in increasing in our town. The guidelines for applicants, Black, African-American, Asian-American, Pacific Islander, Latino, Hispanic, Native American, or multiracial. They have to be a citizen of the United States, and the current program that's in our town now is focused on high school applicants. The ideal candidate for a better chance.
We cannot get into descriptions of other programs. Is there a budget question?
No. I will basically say that the criteria for this is that it looks at academic achievements. It basically looks and also includes the right to use income, which is exactly the factor that Open Choice does not have as a criteria for eligibility. There are two candidates currently that are at the ABC in Darien who are highlighted on their website. There are two candidates currently that are at the ABC in Darien who are highlighted on their website. One is attending Lehigh University where she will compete on their track and field team and plans to major in architecture.
Are we, we need something pertaining to the budget or open choice, not a descriptor about ABC House.
Okay. I think this is the smarter choice and the right choice for Darien. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience? Hey, Michelle, you want to start out with Zoom?
Alex Taylor, you are unmuted and recognized. Hello, I am Alexandra Taylor at 4 Berenger Road. And I am speaking on behalf of the Special Education Parent Advisory Committee, CPAC, this evening. Thank you to our administrators, the Board of Education, and teachers for all your hard work and dedication to all students. For DHS, CPAC has been asking the administration to add sign language as a course offering to DH students for years. Many students with disabilities, particularly those with language-based disability, are not able to take a foreign language at the high school level. Establishing a course in sign language at the Darien High School would provide accessibility to allow, to a language to a large population of students and enable them to meet foreign language requirement needed to attend many colleges and universities. Our districts and our DRG, including Greenwich and Wilton, offer ASL. In fact, when students at Wilton High School are surveyed, 58% say that they would be interested in taking a year-long ASL course. And those interested, 34% say they take it in place of another language. And 66% say they would take ASL in addition to the current foreign language. We predict that Darien students would just, be just as, if not more interested in ASL. An elementary, we support administrators continuing relationship with literacy hour at the ELP for the next school year. Early intervention is critical to students with reading disabilities. We strongly urge you to consider expanding literacy how professional development focused on dyslexia identification to kindergarten and first graders. Professional development. The impacts of the COVID pandemic will be lasting. We support improved mental health professional development for all educators. We can encourage the district to survey all educators and paraphrased professionals and what professional development they would be, would find beneficial and share the results of the survey so that the educators feel supported on an ongoing basis. In addition, we look forward to hearing the next steps for inclusion in elementary schools after Marilyn Friend completes her, completes her self-study at the elementary level. We hope the district will also consider having Marilyn Friend conduct professional development to the teens new to co-teaching at the middle and high school and team teaching at the high school level. And while Friend did train these teams and administrators in these models first began several years ago, we believe updated training is wanted. Oriented on RC 24 allocations. Since 2019, we've discussed that there are many general education support services included in RC 24. With the COVID pandemic, we believe that justifiably the need for general education supports in this area have expanded over time. These include mental health services for general education, ELP, Fitch, and students with 504 plans. The budget transparency would be improved by including the percentage of time that is dedicated to students with IAPs versus general education in the budget itemizations. Thank you very much for your time.
Thanks for speaking this evening. Beth, can you hear us?
Yes, I can. Thank you.
Go ahead. Thank you.
My name is Beth Morgan and I live at 35 Hamilton Lane. My husband and I have lived in Darien for almost 10 years. We have two children in fifth grade at Ox Ridge and at third entering kindergarten in the fall. I am speaking tonight to voice my support for open choice, the hiring of Ken Shelton and all DEI initiatives. I grew up in a predominantly white suburb of Boston in the eighties when the reversal of segregation was a top priority. My town voluntarily joined a program called MECO, which entailed the busing of Boston students to schools in my town and others when and where there was space. The fact that this existed, I apologize for my children. The fact that this existed 40 years ago, yet is being so contested now in Darien gives me pause. The title used for the sensationalized fear-mongering petition going around is also disturbing. Why is open choice wrong for Darien but right for towns like Westport, Weston, Fairfield, my hometown, and many others? What makes Darien different? Is it our history of racism and bigotry? Is it the complacency we have demonstrated in the face of discrimination? Are we not ready to put a stop to the messages of hate emblazoned at our schools by children who think it's acceptable to hate on people of a different race, religion, gender, sexuality, et cetera? I for one, I'm ashamed of the perpetual signs of bigotry in our town that continue to make national news. I feel we as a community should all be embarrassed and dedicated to changing the narrative of our town for the sake of our kids. I have heard some concerns that open choice may potentially increase class size. I was one of the parents who spoke before the Board of Ed in the fall of 2020 about the fourth grade sections at Ox Ridge being over optimal size. However, this was corrected going forward and I applaud this board for listening and adding a safeguard to protect smaller class sizes. Further, open choice students will only be placed in classes where there is space. We are talking about four students per school after all. This is hardly an influx of students. Regardless, the benefit of any diversity in our children's lives far outweighs the potential of one extra student in their class. I attended Andover for high school and while it may not be a fair analogy because it is a private school, what most people don't know is that Andover's demographic is approximately 50% white and 50% of color. This is compared to over 95% at, at Darien schools. My experience as a teen was so much more rich and educational because of the diversity surrounding me at Andover. Andover graduates go on to win Nobel Peace Prizes, lead nations, cure diseases. It cannot be denied that the wealth of diversity experienced during my most formative years helped to shape and enrich me. It is important to note that this exposure to diversity is also something colleges are seeking out in applicants. Colleges have a vested interest in choosing students who can assimilate and thrive in a diverse world. How do we teach our kids that, that here with no diversity and DEI? With much deference to the Board of Ed, I implore you that it would be a mistake to continue to ignore the deep-rooted bigotry and lack of diversity in our town. With open choice and DEI initiatives, we can accomplish so much. To one, reverse the history of discrimination and bigotry. Two, infuse our children with much-needed diversity that will enrich their education, development, and sense of community. And three, give underprivileged children in nearby communities an opportunity to change.
Thank you, Ms. Morgan. You're at time. Thank you for speaking this evening. Clara, can you hear us?
Yes, can you hear me?
We can. Go ahead. Thank you, Clara.
Hi, I'm Clara Sartori. I live at 161 Old Kings Highway South in Darien and I am a member of the RTM Education Committee. The comments I'm going to make are my own. I am also a former member of the Board of Education, so I hope you'll consider my thoughts a little bit helpful. I'm sure you know that I would like to share a few thoughts about stewardship, known as the responsible overseeing and protection of something worth caring for and preserving. As all of you know, as a deliberative body and stewards of the town's schools, the Board of Ed owes the community careful and thoughtful consideration of all of the superintendent's proposed programs and expenses for the coming year. The board is expected to balance the needs of the town's students with taxpayer affordability. Central to this mission is a respectful analysis of all the facts behind proposed expenses. Doing the homework required to understand and present reasoning for school programs and funding is indeed a formidable task for board members, but it is the job and we're elected to do. No doubt, this process requires thorough understanding of the budget and rigorous evaluations of programs, including adjustment and at times elimination of programs. As experts on the Darien community, the Board of Ed's examination of the budget is crucial to the continuation of excellent schools here in Darien. Tough decisions are often necessary. However, when cuts are proposed, they should be suggested with sensitivity to the implications for the students and the staff. For the administration, stewardship involves months in preparing this budget as they use their expertise to consider education trends, suggest initiatives, analyze staff needs, and study enrollment projections, all with the eye to meet, all with an eye to meeting student needs. Therefore, I would like to suggest that your suggestions for modifications in the budget include the rationale for the proposed cuts, including possible ways of delivering the program at a lesser cost. Modifications with personnel implications should be suggested in executive session. Careless public conversations about personnel by the board will only result in poor morale and hamper future negotiations and recruitment efforts. If a reduction in force is necessary, it should be vetted before the budget process. Discussion of support for modification should be held in public session, not in a caucus. Darien is extremely fortunate that the community generously supports its schools. As an example, the RTM has supported operations budgets without exception during the past several years. And in the past three building projects, there has been no call for referendum.
Clara, you're at, Clara, you're at time.
Sorry. Okay, that's all I have to say. Thank you very much. Bye-bye.
Peter, can you hear us?
I can hear you. Thank you so much. And
Great. Go ahead. Thank you.
So, thank you, Dr. Adley, members of the Board of Education. I would like to thank each of you for your time, your thoughtfulness, your patience as we explored open choice. There is likely not much more to be said that hasn't already been discussed and deliberated and considered since January when we started this discussion. Today's release of the National Education Association Survey of Teachers reminds us where we are in education today. According to the NEA survey, 55% of teachers reported that they're planning to leave the profession or retire early. This is up from 37% just this last August. A huge climb in a short period of time, as stated by NEA President Peggy Kringle. So there have been massive shifts over the last two years that I'm not sure any of us really have started to comprehend. We've had a lot of new families move into town. Many older residents have moved out. Younger residents have moved in. And as people have said here before, we've anticipating maybe about 300 new apartments in town. We really should start thinking now about how we unwind the pandemic in both the school and society context. Just like a bad traffic accident that takes minutes to shut down a road, but hours and hours later to get the traffic moving again. The pandemic will take a long time to scale back and realign our economy, our society, and our schools. There is necessary timelines to this recovery that we all need to consider. Much work needs to be done together. Administrators, teachers, parents, and guardians. We should accept this fact and not rush into any pre-pandemic expectations or starting new programs or initiating new types of initiatives like open choice. Accomplishment of any pedagogical objectives have to be focused on the children in the classroom. For example, there will be certain children who will not initially feel comfortable without a mask. Some will need assistance socializing again. Others will feel deep pain of lost loved ones. Some other children will question the relevance of school, given what we've all been through. They will need our full support, our full attention, our children and our students. They need us. We should not assume that any of us will be ready to get back to normal because the definition of normal is changing. The ripple effects of the pandemic.
You're at time, Mr. McGinnis. Thank you very much for speaking.
Thank you much.
Hi there. My name is Emily Salmore. I live at 3 Berry Lane. And I just have a quick, short and sweet addition to what Alicia Skinner was saying. So I have two children at Middlesex. One is in sixth grade and one is in eighth grade. We have one middle school in town and it's already quite crowded. I looked online today, Middlesex has 1,123 students. Each of the five Norwalk middle schools has just over half of what Middlesex has with just a slightly lower, a higher teacher to student ratio by one student. So, and each of them has a principal. Each of them has an auditorium, all the facilities. And the reason I know this is that I'm a substitute in Norwalk Public Schools. So I am in the classroom. I see that each of the rooms is equipped with smart boards with all the facilities that they need. And I just can't for the life of me figure out why this program is being floated now in the time when we are a rapidly growing town. We are a town that is growing as, has been communicated many times with condos, with the growth in population from COVID. I just think it's the wrong thing for right now. I'm not saying never. I really, really would support the ABC program to reiterate the earlier speaker. I'm not going to go into it. Other than it's vetted, it's privately funded and it's need and merit-based. I really think that Darien can do better integrating the students that are already here. That people, you know, students who are minority, students of color who are already here, we can do better with outside of school programming. But this is wrong for our town. I really urge Board of Ed members to assign gravity in your decision-making to this matter, taking into account the long-term effects such a, such a program of open choice would have on Darien. Wrong choice for Darien right now. Thank you.
Thanks for speaking this evening. Kate, can you hear us? We can hear you.
Can you see? Oh yeah, sorry.
Go ahead. Thank you.
Hi, everybody. Kate Bates, 33 Ridgely Street. Thank you to the BOE all for being there tonight. Thank you to our amazing teachers. We are so lucky in Darien to have some of the best teachers in the country. And I'm grateful for them at all times. I just wanted to say I wasn't planning to speak tonight, but I would like to just say I'm a no to open choice and a yes to a return to normalcy for our children. As a Realtor in Darien, our schools are our number one selling point. Small classes, small-town feel. We are not Greenwich, Norwalk, Norwalk or Stanford, nor do we strive to be. Small-town, tight-knit community is what my clients are looking for. It is very hard to find that on the New England coast, 50 minutes out of New York City.
Kate, is there anything specific to the budget?
No.
About open choice.
On open choice.
Okay.
So this is about open choice and it is about adding more children to our school outside of our district. And that's what I'm talking about. So I also, you know, listened to a lot of people speaking about bigotry in our town. I don't see that at all. I'm proud of Darien. I'm proud of the town that we are. And I don't think if you're for or against open choice, or if you're against open choice, that you're against, you know, that you're a bigot. I, I'm just like confused at all of these, you know, all the people speaking against our town. Darien's an incredible town. Our, our community is incredible. The, the teachers are incredible. Open choice is the wrong choice right now for Darien. I think we need to get back to normalcy for our children. We've had a rough couple of years and I just don't think this is the time for that kind of a change. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking this evening. Elizabeth, can you hear us?
Hi. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Go ahead. Thank you.
Elizabeth Wilder, 21 Ridgely Avenue. I just wanted to voice my support for the DEI program, for the open choice program and for Dr. Adley, our teachers, and all of our school staff who serve both our children and our community very well every day.
Thank you for speaking this evening. Armel, can you hear us? Armel, can you hear us? We'll go to the next one and look for her on the way back. Sure.
Hi, so my name is Paula Sardoni. And I am, I live on 21 Tower Drive. So I am originally from Brazil. I moved to this town about 11 years ago. I had all my three children here and I have been I had all my three children here and I have been, I have gone through since the LP all the way. Now, my oldest one is in fifth grade. And I I have seen so much diversity here. I I'm part of the international group. I have many friends from many different cultures. I don't see that Darien is a very segregated town. I see that we are all present here and I think we could do better in the ways we treat each other here. And if the schools would like to focus on the way we treat each other here. But I don't think bringing more people from the outside will fix what the problems we have here right now. These kids that will come from other towns, from the Norwalks, they will be exposed to the hostility and to the environment that we have, if there is an environment that we're trying to fix. And we will still have the same problem. I don't think just exposure will do it. I think it's a lot of education, it's a lot of talk, it's parent involvement, it's community involvement. And I think that will make a big difference. But bringing the other kids to the environment we have here, hoping that it's going to be their secret recipe to fix our problems. I do not believe so. I also think that we could do better in integrating the minority that we have here in town already. And I mean, I think that's that's the point I would like to make and spend more of your time. Thank you so much for the work you're doing. The DEI, I'm looking forward to see his ideas to see how it works in year one. I hope that we can reevaluate after he shows to us what he can do in one year. And I really hope we can get something good out of the, what he's going to bring. But bringing other kids to the environment we have and the number of kids we have already in town, it is not going to be good for them and not going to be good for us either. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking this evening.
Thanks.
Can you hear me now?
Yes, we can. Thank you. Hear you and see you. Go ahead. Thank you.
Okay. My name's Armel Jacobs. I am twelve Fitch. I want to say that I am against the proposed cuts or any proposed cuts that would hinder any ongoing diversity, equity, and inclusion work. A little disturbed to hear so many people pop on and say that they're big fans of diversity, but they just want the right diverse people, people who've been selected. I I don't think that that perspective is inclusive. So I wanted to say that. I also wanted to say that I'm against the personnel cuts that were proposed by Mr. Brown. I'll echo Ms. Sartori's assertion that discussions of salary and those particulars should probably be done in executive session, particularly in a climate where, you know, it's not an easy time to be working in a school district right now. We want to be able to make sure we're able to attract and retain the best talent. I I'll just say I'm so grateful to Dr. Adley specifically and the whole team that's done just such a good job managing what is an absolute cataclysm. We have been able to function fairly normally, remain open almost throughout the entire time. And I have to wonder what is actually motivating the proposed cut in salary when I think Dr. Adley has done an incredible job making our town safe for our children to stay in school. So I for one am thankful. So that's what I wanted to say. Thanks.
Thank you for speaking this evening.
Username Steph's iPhone, you are unmuted and recognized.
Steph's iPhone, can you hear us?
Yes. Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, go ahead. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Stephanie Desai. I live at Five Midbrook Lane. I have a child at Royal and at Middlesex. I am speaking in support of the continued development of the DEI program. I didn't plan to speak tonight, but I started to a little Googling to try to support my arguments. And what I came across very quickly was that an inclusive classroom is a general education classroom where students with and without learning differences learn together. Inclusive classrooms are welcoming and support the diverse academic, social, emotional, and communication needs of all students. As a reminder, diversity, equity, and inclusion in Darien has been discussed as a part of the strategic plan since January twenty-two, twenty twenty. Students of alumni and families have been publicly calling for support and action for this program since twenty twenty. Therefore, I ask that the BOE continue to support this DEI initiative for the betterment of our children, of our schools and all of our children. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for speaking this evening. All right. Good. All right. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for everyone that came and spoke in public. And thank you, everyone that participated on Zoom. Thank you for all the feedback. I think the board has listened. All the comments from all the folks that have spoken over the last couple of weeks and this evening. So we'll continue to go back to do our work around the budget. Please don't hesitate to continue to call or send emails with your thoughts. And we'll continue to move this forward. With that, we will move to item four, further discussion and possible action on open choice program. So we'll open it up to the board. Any further discussion or action, any further discussion on open choice or any additional questions or information needed?
I'd like to make a motion, sir.
Sure, Mr. Seeny.
I'd like to make a motion that the Darien Board of Education approve the Darien Public Schools to participate in the open choice program with the participation from the Norwalk School District.
Okay, do I have a second? Mrs. Ackman, any discussion on that? Nope. Yep. Go ahead.
I do. So in in kind of looking about what our role is, I think we've heard a lot of our role. Part of what the State Board of Education requires we do in statute is provide opportunities. And I meant to pull it up, but Mr. Seeny got the conversation going quickly. So I don't have it in front of me. Is it? It requires that we make available to our students diverse interactions with students of diversity socioeconomic backgrounds. And that is written into statute. So I think one of the conversations is if we don't do this, are we asking ourselves, how are we meeting that requirement by statute? I think there's a lot of different things people could consider, but right now this is the only thing we have on the table other than the teacher and residents that if state comes back to us and says, what are you doing to meet the statutory requirement? This is it at the moment. And and I think we have to be prepared to ask, ask and answer that hard question as we have this conversation. Are we meeting our statutory obligations?
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman.
Sorry, I'll find the direct language if anyone has questions.
Any additional comments or questions, Mrs. Parent?
I guess I just wanted a little more clarity on there's so so much of the public comment that we heard over the past weeks have been financial. And I went back and I listened to all the meetings and I went back to my notes. And what struck me was that there are two Board of Finance members that publicly supported this program and said that they support the effort and that there was one which was which really stuck with me, who is an administrator in a different district in the state that has open choice. And I wrote down his quote, it says, we've had no problems. This is only incremental cost, provided you don't break any sections. Out-of-pocket costs are only a couple thousand, which is less than you'd be getting from the state. So I would just like a little clarity from either Mr. Roodell or Dr. Adley. Is that comment correct? That these are incremental costs and that these, this, it's not the the millions that we're hearing from the public comment?
Thank you. We have been clear in the last presentation for open choice that through elementary school, if we were taking the sixteen students, it would result in a positive balance of over two hundred thousand dollars. Similarly, if you would go, if you if you play the students out cohort wise through the middle school, for example, that would also, just in round numbers, result in a hundred thousand dollars to the benefit. So we don't see this as a a negative, a negative expenditure for the district.
Mrs. Best.
Thank you. Just to go further, I believe, correct me if I'm wrong, but one of the cuts on the table at the moment to cut the open choice program actually removes thirty-eight thousand dollars in revenue for next year's budget, if I'm correct with the sixteen students. So I do feel like the finances now and moving forward, we've discussed pretty thoroughly. And I and I feel like that information is there. And thank you so much for all of that. Enrollment is another piece that we've heard quite a bit about. And I just wanted to go back again to Mr. Roodell's comments that not only are we not bringing in students to get us to full capacity, but there's actually still quite a bit of room left in these sections as we look at our enrollment protections moving forward. Correct?
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much. We have goals as a district around diversity and inclusion. We have steps we're talking about taking, but I think it's important for all of us to think about it as as pieces that are going to have to work together. There's no one answer that's going to fix everything for us as a district. So to me, this is just another piece of reasonable, to to my way of thinking, very small risk piece to help us move the needle and help create a more inclusive and more diverse district here in Darien. So I can't see, I I can't see how it's not the right choice. Timing is something we've heard quite a bit about. Timing is always difficult. There's never a great time. We're never going to have everything lined up. Portables are on their way out. That's already happening. We already know that. So that's wonderful. Yes, we have facilities needs, but they're being addressed. We're not going back to normal. We've all said that. We all know that. It's going to be a different normal. So we can't wait until we get back to something that we recognize from the before time. So that doesn't hold a lot of water. So I I think we have a responsibility to give this a try. I do think the timing is now. And I think that we've, we've heard a lot of concerns and we've had a lot of really valuable discussion. And I think for me, we've addressed the concerns.
Thank you, Mrs. Best. Mrs. Ackman.
So I guess I, Mrs. Best brings up a good point on the timing issue. Why now? I guess as a board member, as I look at, you know, my stewardship, which is really the right word to be using on this. You know, we've heard claims that class rises in kindergarten have just risen for the last nine years. That's actually inaccurate. And this board actually took action to lower class sizes to make sure that that we had small class sizes. So if anything, in the last six years since I've been on the board, we've actually made classes smaller. And in terms of remediation, I will, I will admit publicly, I'm struggling with that. We are receiving children as kindergartners. There is no remediation per se. That's the first time you begin your compulsory education in Connecticut. So if we were taking kids in any other grade level, I might understand remediation. And respectfully to the administration, you know, we talked a lot about COVID remediation last year. And outside of our grants, we didn't put remediation money significantly in our budget. So it can't be, we're not going to fund remediation, but we're really concerned about remediation. I do think there are going to be effects we're going to see of our children coming back into school. I do think, as Mrs. Best says, we're going to be talking about a new normal. I do think teachers, administrators, our our healthcare professionals are going to have to work with all of our students to re-acclimate them into whatever this new normal is. But the idea that we can't take kids in at kindergarten when they're beginning their schooling because of remediation, I struggle with that. I would understand it in in different grades, but I struggle. Kindergarten is when you begin your compulsory education in Connecticut. I I just think that we have an obligation. I went up to Hartford. I testified against regionalization. I made the argument that we could do it better ourselves if you let us. And this is a choice program. I think we're going to have to answer the state if we turn down choice programs because they're going to say, you said you could do it yourself, and now you're not doing it. I do think this is the best way for us to safely wade into a a choice and an area that we have maybe not been fully robusted and have maximum flexibility with how we handle it going forward. I really would urge board members, I think it's good in the long term. And I think it gives us the maximum flexibility as a district that we need to really protect things like small class sizes.
Mrs. McCann.
I actually do think that at another time, open choice could be a worthwhile program for Darien. I do think I'd like to take a closer look. It has potential to be a revenue generator, run the right way. But it also has the potential to have some costs. And I'd like to see some better modeling and some other actuals from other districts. But fundamentally, where I come down, as I don't think this is the year. And so I won't be voting for it tonight, but I do look forward to future conversations. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. McCann. Mr. Seeny.
I'd just remind this board that there are three budget control positions in this year's budget. So if we're so certain that we weren't going to trip class sizes, I was the only one who proposed to cut down the two. We still have two in there proposed in three, three proposed by the administration. So there is some uncertainty around the the class, the number of sections. Two, I was admittedly before, for this program at the beginning, but that was thinking about over a year ago. I am flip-flopping, I will admit that. But I don't know what this new normal you guys speak of is. I think we are going back to normal, but I think we actually have to focus on our kids first. I do want to focus on remediation if there is some. We are seeing some increase in in special ed services and the numbers there. So I want to see this shakeout. I want to see the ripple effects of what we're doing to our kids by them being en masse. Seeing pictures of our elementary school kids at a cafeteria table, one or two facing each other. This is not anywhere close to the world that we're dealing with. So it is not the right time to implement a program like this. I will support it when I have better confidence that we are back to normal. And I I do think we will get there. I don't subscribe to this new normal. Secondarily, I do think we're going to have a better view on what the demographic trends are around moving out of New York City. And I I am in, you know, I know the three apartment complexes are coming along and a few others. I'm confident that they're developed, so it's going to mitigate, you know, the number of families in terms of how they're developed and their sizes. The fact that some have bath, don't have bathtubs even. But I think a lot has changed since this has been brought forth. And I gave Dr. Adley the heads up. And I am, I do hope this work will carry forward. I do hope we'll get better information. You know, we are the, we would be the only district, new district subscribing to it in the in the Norwalk schools. The other districts that are participating have already participated in just shifting kids. Danbury didn't play out either. So there's some issues with the program. But I think over the next twelve months, as we do get back to normal and focus on getting our kids back to normal, I'll have much more confidence in supporting a program like this, but I will be voting no this evening.
Thank you, Mr. Seeny. Any other board questions or comments? Dr. Adley, you want anything?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind. Thank you. And thank you for the community, for your participation. I do want to thank our board members for participating with hand in hand with the community and thoughtfully reviewing the open choice program. I firmly believe the open choice program is the right decision for our students and our community. And now is the right time to participate. Having participated for over twenty years in the program, I can tell you, there'd be not a program cost effective or otherwise that you'll put in place and get, get the the benefit back for our students in particular. Our alumni and current students have spoken passionately about the importance of recognizing, increasing, and celebrating diversity. This is our opportunity to show our students that we are serious about supporting their voices, that we're serious about change, and that we're so serious about supporting diversity and the goals of the strategic plan. There is no point having a strategic plan if we're not going to try and support it. Our administration, staff, and most importantly, our kids are watching tonight. They're watching with hope. They're watching with hope that our words will match our actions. This is not an easy decision and perhaps not even a popular decision. But anything accomplished in life rarely is. Matters relating to finance, space, timing, and are all legitimate issues, but they have been addressed. Let's not kick the can down the road. There is nothing that we have heard that should prevent us from moving forward. I'm appealing to the board. This board prides itself on getting things accomplished when it wants to and when it needs to. The board has heard from the public, and I'm sure you've heard from constituents privately yourselves. And that you're challenging, perhaps even wrestling with the decision. Let us be leaders, not simply passive followers on such important matters. This evening, I ask the board passionately to make the courageous decision to support Darien's participation in the open choice program for the benefit enrichment of all our Darien students as well as those participating in the open choice. Thank you.
So any other board questions or comments? Mr. Seeny.
I would just like to respond. I'm not passively watching this.
I would just like to respond. I'm not passively watching this, Dr. Adley. Thank you.
Yes, yes, Mrs. Worm.
So I, I would also like to say, you know, also prepared to hearing some of the comments this evening. I don't think that we're sitting back passively, and I think that we need to be leaders in getting our town back to normal because I do not believe that we are anywhere near normal. I've seen some of those similar photos. It was the status thing I've seen, seeing two and three kids sit at giant tables. The, I, I don't even want to go into some of the issues going on at the high school with some of the kids I know. We need to work on the mental health of our students. Yes, stewardship, but first to our town.
Hold the applause, Mr. Chairman.
We will hold applause, please. All right. Mrs. Parent.
So I just want to respond to the, our kids idea. Yes, this Board of Education has a responsibility to Darien's children, but it also has a responsibility to the education of every child in the state and in this country. If you guys think that 16 five-year-olds is going to affect the 4,700 other children, I, I just don't understand that argument.
No, no comments from the public, please. Thank you.
Four children in an elementary school. We're talking about this new normal and coming back out of COVID. Every educator, every administrator that has come before this board talking about this has said that this is the right decision for our children. We need to trust the educators that we hire to lead this district.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mrs. Ackman.
I, I'm just, I just think we need to be really forward-thinking here. We have an obligation by statute to expose our children to diverse teachers and diverse populations. We are being presented with a choice program. We told the state we could do it better ourselves, and now we're saying, we don't know. We're listening to revenue conversations, which is not proved out in any district where it's actually being utilized. I've talked to many of them. They don't understand why we're so hung up on this financial issue. We really have to be, like, when we make this vote today, we have an administration saying they can handle it. We have teachers saying they can handle it. But for some reason, we're saying, they're all wrong. We know better. You can't handle it. I just think we need to be thoughtful because there are, there are consequences to actions, and when you vote today, you really have to understand the importance of your vote and what you're doing.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Any other board questions or comments? Mrs. McCam.
Yep. Another comment I didn't make when I spoke earlier is that we've talked about this program as, as, as a vehicle for diversity, but the, the survey is, or excuse me, the enrollment form or the lottery is not actually set up to provide any sort of anything other than who applies. So I think that we, as a district, have to talk about whether or not this could be a vehicle for, for diversity, but that could be a natural outcome as opposed to an actual, um, something that definitively occurs. And so I think that needs to be, we need to talk about that. I, I, I fundamentally feel that we, as a board, have stood behind and will continue to support behind, stand behind the work of diversity. We have supported DEI funding. We've supported teachers and residents. And I, we've agreed to, many of us have, have talked about continuing this conversation. I, I respect your passion on it, Dr. Adley and administration. I, I respect the point of view that, that I am trying to, or, or any of us are trying to override administration. I'm not. But I have some concerns that I'd like to see addressed before we enter. And again, I think our community is exhausted, as many are. So I ask that going forward, whether you agree with what I've said or disagree, that we continue to step together on this, this journey, that we all have a lot to talk about, that it's really difficult, and that some of us may look back in six months and say, yes, I was so on it. Or, you know, and I wish I'd done it differently. We're making the decisions with the best we have in front of us. And I hope as a community, we will continue to, to work and move forward on this and other initiatives.
Thank you, Mrs. McCam. I'll wrap. Go ahead, Mrs. Best.
Just one question before we do come to a vote. If we, are, are we voting on 16 students or we're voting on open choice moving forward for next year?
We're voting on the program.
Okay, so it's not locked at 16 students? Okay, because just to, to add on to that part, I, I do struggle with the point that potentially one, one additional student per section of a kindergarten class is going to so dramatically overtax that teacher, classroom, et cetera. But it does seem like there's a real concern there. So maybe it may be a slightly smaller number is the, is the direction.
Thank you, Mrs. Best. I, I'll wrap it up and, you know, good, again, thank you to the whole board. Thank you to the audience, those folks that have emailed us, those folks that have participated in public comment and the public hearing. I think we've had the debate. I think we've learned a lot from the debate, and if I could just go back a little bit, because I think it's important for the folks to hear that have participated and put their blood, sweat and tears into getting their points across, the hard work that the administration's done, there's been some learnings here as to how we approach or look at a program like this, how we roll it out, how we introduce it, how we talk about it, how we look at the policy. So I just want to make sure everyone understands that we, we've got a lot of lessons learned out of this process in how to look at programs like this on a go-forward basis, how to make sure everyone's participating and we're hearing everyone, and how do we get all the facts lined up? I think to some board members' comments, there are a lot of questions about the program, all right, in terms of goals and objectives. There's questions as the students move through and get into high school. So there's all those questions. The one to think, one thing to think about when you look at a program like this, whether it's open choice or another program, is it's great to have those questions and thoughts, but you also need to be at the table to participate and change the programs. So whether it's this program or another program, that's something to think about. And then just from a high level, a broad perspective, I think the conversation has been good. We value small class size. We value our elementary schools and our neighborhood schools. It's so important to us. But every now and then, we also have to think outside our borders, and we love our town and we love our education system. I've spent a lot of time up in Hartford, a lot of time speaking to legislatures. We are up there looking for grants and reimbursements on the elementary school we're building, and we'll be up there sometime between now and June looking for more money to do the renovations on the three schools and remove the portables, which was all put in place well over two years ago. But we are moving forward with that work. So something to think about, or something that I've thought about, and I, I've discussed it with my fellow board members, is how do we want to control the conversation? We throw around Hartford and that word as like a fear mongering word. We are part of the Connecticut Department of Education. We're a public school system. All right, yes, it's a tale of two states in many ways, Fairfield County and the rest of the state. But I think we have to think about how do we want to control a conversation when regionalization comes down the path, when funding comes down the path to reimburse us on some of the constructions and renovations that we're doing to these buildings? And the one thing I think about is it's nice to go back to the state and say, look, we are participating in some of these programs cautiously and methodically because, oh, by the way, we're also developing the town, all right, and we're building 300-plus units that are coming on board. So while we want to participate, we're going to test it, we're going to pile it, we're going to do it slowly. All right, because we do need to lead as a high-funded, high-performing district. It's important. We're looked at. The conference calls I participate, the emails I get from other board chain, board chairs, we are looked at as a leader. We're recognized as a leader through COVID, and that's for from all the hard work from the administration, from the parents, and especially from our students. But I think one thing to think about when we talk about how we're viewed or the conversations about a white, wealthy town in Fairfield County, Connecticut, we also need to think, how do we want to change that conversation? How do we want to control it? And so whether it's this program or another program, we have a lot of good things to talk about in this town. We are doing the right thing on affordable housing. We're doing the right thing on inclusionary zoning. And you add to that, you know, we're going to participate in a program like this, and, and the state starts saying, all right, we'll start pointing our fingers elsewhere because Darien's figuring out to do it in a small way and cautiously and methodically, but I think we also need to think about the conversation we want to have outside our walls. Our, our previous first selectmen, our current first selectmen, spent a lot of time in Hartford, on West Cog and those other places, like we're looked at and we're viewed to lead and to do the right thing. And, but it's important that we listen to the parents in the community, and I think that's where we've had the good debate. So those are some points from me having participated in a lot of these meetings outside of town. Good. Any further questions or comments?
Can I call a question?
Excuse me?
Can we call the question?
Yes, sure, absolutely.
Now we have to vote on.
Yeah, you have to.
I, I didn't do it. Are, are we voting or should?
Yes, so we'll move forward. I had a, I had a second. We had a discussion. So we'll move forward on a vote to move forward with the open choice program. So that is Julie Best, that is Tara Ackman, David Deneen, and Sarah Parent. All right, so the motion does not move forward. So we are not moving forward with open choice. So thank you again.
You have to finish the vote.
Oh, okay. Yeah, thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Those voting against, those voting not for open choice, Mr. Seeny, Mr. Brown, Mr. Maroney, Mrs. McCam and Mrs. Worm. All right, good. Thank you. I think we had no applause from the audience, please. All right, we're trying to conduct business here, and it's important. The debate has been had, the conversation's been had, we've listened, we've learned. We'll continue to move forward. This program may come around again. I think there's a consensus of the board that would like to continue to look at this program and move it forward. I want to thank Dr. Adley for continuing to try and prove and build on the educational excellence that we have in Darien, but the board has taken a vote and spoken, so we move forward. And now we've got more work to do on the budget, but again, thank you, everyone in public. Thank the parents, the students, and thank you to the whole board and the administration for doing the work and taking the vote. So we'll move forward. We will move on to further review of the 2022-2023 superintendent's proposed budget and further discussion on FY23 proposed budget modifications under consideration. So I know Mr. Rudel has sent out a spreadsheet to everyone and has captured a lot of the work that was done at the previous meeting. So I'm sure Mr. Rudel, you'll continue to capture any changes we have, but again, we'll this evening go RC by RC and see if there are any additional add deletes or modifications to the budget before we move to next week where we will motion to move forward on any of those add cuts or deletes, have a conversation, vote, and then get to the point of it becoming a board of ed budget. Any questions before we move forward? All right, good. We will move on to, we will start out at RC1. Any changes, adds or deletes to what's been put on the table? Or anything else we want to add or cut? Are we good on RC1?
Duke, I'm sorry.
Sure.
How are we proceeding? Are we going through these questions? Are we talking about, like, how do, how are we organizing this?
We're going through, and if there's any further discussion or any adds or deletes that people want to add over and above, that was what was put on the table last week.
Okay.
All right. Anything else on RC1?
Can I just ask a quick?
Sure, Mrs. Worm.
So for instance, the cut I put up, I was told is contractual. Do we have to talk about that or does it just come down?
You can remove the cut. No, you have.
I have to actually go and remove the cut. We didn't just already do.
You just say, I'd like to take the cutoff on whatever it was you specifically cut.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. All right, RC2. Bear with me just a second. RC2 Fitch Academy. Any adds, deletes, or conversation on Fitch Academy? RC3 Middlesex Middle School. Anything with respect to ours, Middlesex Middle School? We'll move into the elementary schools. RC5 Henley.
Do.
Yes, Mr. Seeny.
Since open choice wasn't approved, I would ask the administration remove all the open choice related items.
Good point. So Mr. Rudel, so that will be taken out and the budget will be clean next week.
Correct.
Okay, good. Thank you, Mr. Seeny. So we'll move from, from Henley to Holmes. Sure, Mr. Maroney.
Mike, so in, in our packet, in answering one of the questions about the physical education teachers, it mentions that the, the extra section at Henley is prompting the, the addition of the, the point two FTE. But in looking through our sections, unless I'm mistaken, I don't think we've added any FTEs in in 2019, 2018, we had 118 sections, 2019, 113, 2020, 110, 21, 109. And 22 were, were projected to be 108. So I'm not sure how we're adding more sections that we need more PE features. I'm a little confused. I'm on page 62 with the enrollment summary report. Unless my sections are total school, yeah, that's total school, but I'm a little confused.
Want to have that as a takeaway or?
No, if you're going by section count, there was an FTE reduction in PE for, I believe it was FY20. And that was the year that we built the schedule with the COVID schedule, which was less PE time. And so that cut, that reduction never needed to manifest itself. And as we have this increased section and we're looking to build the schedule, we need the, the point two to make it work.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Maroney. Anything additional on Holmes? Anything on Ox Ridge? Excuse me. Anything on Royal? Anything additional on Tokenique, and that would wrap up the elementary schools? Anything on RC11 Athletic Health and PE? Anything we want to change from last week or anything we want to add or delete? All right, we will go on to RC12 Maintenance. Any changes from anything last week or anything additional that wants to be added or deleted?
Sorry, can we go back to 11?
Sure.
Do we have the ability to remove the athletic director?
No, by law, we have to have an athletic director.
So should that cut be removed?
It can be if someone wants to ask for it to be removed. If not, we will go through it from a motion standpoint at the next meeting.
Okay.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. McCam. We'll move on to RC12 Maintenance. Anything additional, anything updated or anything we want to do? Maintenance. All right. Move on to RC13 Music. Anything additional we want to do on RC13 Music? Move on to RC14 Art. Anything we want to do there in RC14 Art? We move on to RC15 Technology. Anything we want to add or delete or conversation we want to have there? RC15 Technology. We'll move on to RC16 Administration.
Okay.
Sure, Mrs. Worm.
So I'd like to remove the cut line 16, I'm sorry, 612 of $5,119.
Thank you, Mrs. Worm. Anything else, administration? Mr. Brown.
Mike, please.
Is it on? Thank you, Mr. Brown.
Row 600, 11011, like to remove the 10% cut I proposed.
Thank you, Mr. Brown. Anything else on administration? We'll move on to RC17 Health. Anything on RC17 Health?
Sorry, Duke, on 16, I'm going to remove the add of 50,000 legal.
On RC16 Administration, you're going to remove the add of 50,000. Okay, Mr. Rudel, we good? Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. We're back to RC17 Health. Anything on Health? Move on to RC18 Personnel. The RC 18 on Personnel. Good, thank you. Move on to RC19 Curriculum. Any further discussion there or any adds or deletes? RC19 Curriculum. Move on to RC20 Finance. Anything on RC20 Finance? We'll move on to RC21 Library and Media. Anything on RC21? Anything on RC twenty-one, library and media? We'll move on to RC twenty-two, technology, education. Anything on RC twenty-two, technology education? We'll move on to RC twenty-three, summer school. Anything on RC twenty-three, summer school? Anything on RC twenty-four, special education? Anything, anything on RC twenty-five, fixed expenses? Thank you. Anything on RC twenty-six, the early learning program? Good, thank you. RC twenty-eight, COVID expenses. And then we will move back to the capital budget. Before I go to the capital budget, any RCs we need to go back to? Everyone's good?
Sorry, I guess I have to go back. I had my questions based on the ad cut list. On the Bursar, there were questions from RTMF and B about the Bursar. And in the discussion, it explained that we're the only district in our Derg that uses School Cash Online, and we're using two systems to to process one transaction, essentially. Is there something better or different that we should be doing or?
So New Canaan used to use School Cash Online. They did move away from it. And they really just use the portal that's used to collect like deposits for the school lunch program, which is my school books there. So New Canaan, Weston and Westport all have a one point O. Munis unfortunately does not have a a system to collect revenue. So there's no online payment feature within Munis where we could process credit card receipts or collect revenue from parents, which is really what School Cash Online will eventually turn into, which is just that portal, that mechanism for School Cash to collect revenue from parents for fundraisers and donations.
Okay, so their their setups have their limits also. It's just a different situation than we're in.
Correct, and they have the, they have the equivalent staff.
Okay, thank you. That's it. Thank you.
All right, we're done with the RCs. We'll move on to capital. Anything specific to Darian High School on capital? Anything on Middlesex Middle School with respect to capital? Move on to the elementary schools, anything on Henley? Anything on Holmes? This ridge, we're building a new school. Royal Elementary. And Tokenique. Move on to Central Office, anything with respect to Central Office on capital? We'll move on to district-wide, anything district-wide on capital? Sure, Dr. Adley.
Mr. Chairman, if I may, if I have it right, I don't think we removed from the list Assistant Principal, Athletic Director, Department Chairs. Is that correct?
Probably not.
So I'm just saying, like, I'm really worried that we get to a meeting the next week. And we vote these things out. I mean, haven't even had a discussion about them. These are some of the most talented, dedicated staff members that you'll ever meet. It was mentioned tonight, I think, must have been, yes, mentioned tonight about people leaving the profession. Can I tell you the number one reason people leave the profession over the years that has been consistent? That people don't support staff members. I don't know what you think. Honestly, forgive me for a moment. What do you think these staff members who are zooming in are thinking? That's completely detrimental to the culture and the learning environment for our kids. And what do you expect me to do? Like, do you want to continue all the work that we got to get done? We haven't even had that discussion. Man, I just can't imagine getting to next week. And you're going to dismantle the structure that's serving the district so well for people who have put boards here and who have gone before me, super tenants who have gone before me. Like, let's not do with a closed eye here. I I I'm really apprehensive about next week. Sitting here like just waiting to be able to choice and voting these people out. I mean, so we need to, at some point, we need to have like a discussion of where where we're going with this because these people are teaching and learning, their supervision and evaluation, their curriculum oversight and development, all the things that make the school system tick so well. So I I just want to recognize that dynamic because I I just can't imagine that we're going to move forward and just take a simple vote in these these issues.
Mr. Brown?
Point of information, I thought we were making changes to the list tonight. Discussion would be next week. Was that not what you said at the start here, Duke?
We can make this, we can make decisions. We can pull stuff off this evening. You can have a discussion about it. Next week, they will move to a motion, a second, any further discussion and a vote. So but we can make any changes to what's been proposed this evening also in terms of pulling some of this stuff off. And to Dr. Adley's point, we have not had a board discussion and no real work has been done or work has been ordered around any of these positions. So I think Dr. Adley makes a good point in terms of how the board usually goes forward with looking at or requesting work around a specific position, the roles, the responsibilities, the impact to education and students. So, you know, there is an option to take them off this evening. Or they go to a motion and a vote next week. Mrs. McCammon?
I will be clear, I don't need any work on those items. Those are not cuts that I would be supporting.
Thank you, Mrs. McCammon. Mr. Seeny?
Yeah, it was my understanding that we were responsible for removing or adding our own cuts this evening. And I don't have, I mean, I would never support a lot of these cuts that Dr. Adley mentioned. I would just be careful about drawing parallels between our vote on open choice tonight and these proposals. And I would just caution that that comparison being made. But I have, I hope they don't even get a second next week if they are not removed from the list.
Mr. Seeny, Mr. Seeny, respectfully, frankly, you really, you said that, recognize, I very much appreciate the courtesy you you extended to me. But you also, you also said that you changed your position. I can't like, I can't guarantee people on the table are not going to change your position next week. And I just, I just need to flag that for the floor, that's all.
But we did not vote on it, sir. So I just want to be careful about drawing that.
Mrs. Parent?
I think people well understand my position on educators and our staff. And I, Dr. Adley, as an individual board member, those, I will have nothing to do with those cuts. The staff and these schools have my full support.
Thank you, Mrs. Parent. Mrs. Best?
Similarly, I I don't feel there's been anything put in front of us to discuss. Nothing has been said as to why we would consider these cuts, how we would have the schools operate without them. To me, it's a non-starter. These are not cuts I would support whatsoever.
Thank you, Mrs. Best. Mrs. Ackman?
So I will say to Dr. Adley's concern, I think for any staff members looking, you have, you've at least heard from board members here that they won't support it. I won't support it either. I will say that I think it is borderline irresponsible to, and I have said this before to other board members when they've made cuts drastically without information. I said it respectfully. Mr. Maroney knows when he cut freshman sports, I said it was irresponsible to do it without further conversation. We have had four budget meetings. None of these areas were flagged, were asked for information. So I certainly will not be flip-flopping. I'm firm in my stance that this is not something I will support. And I certainly hope our educators out there hear that and our administrators, and don't go looking for other jobs because there's plenty of other districts hiring. And I ask you to have the patience to do this. And and I really do wish. Poor Mr. Maroney, I called him out. We've had this conversation with years. But, Mr. Brown, I wish if there was a rationale, you would at least let us know what the rationale is because there's been zero conversation on this.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Mr. Seeny?
I just want to be careful about calling people out because the vote on the entire budget was not unanimous last year. Thank you.
It wasn't. I voted against it. I voted against it because we didn't have COVID money or remediation money in the budget, which we're now saying that we don't have because kids need remediation. So it doesn't have to be unanimous. We can debate. The nine of us are supposed to debate and talk. I have questions about cuts.
Thank you, Mrs. Ackman. Thank you, Mr. Seeny. So I would not, I think there's further discussion on some of the new FTEs that are proposed. And I think we'll have further discussion on that this evening or next week. I personally, as a board member, do not support any of those cuts and want to assure and make sure that our staff that's working so hard out there on a daily basis understands that. There is a process to go through. I know it creates anxiety. It's not fair. But there's also a process to bring stuff to the board and the board working collaboratively with the administration to do the work. If there is a review to be had around programs or roles and responsibilities, you know, it's always done at the board table in terms of looking at that work, doing that work, getting feedback, you know, from our community. So I'm hoping that's, that's where it will go, but none of these cuts have my individual support. Anyone else?
All right. And yeah, I just wanted to ask the board, the the Board of Education, the questions were submitted. Four of the questions were addressed last week, and we put them in. If the board wants to clarify the answers to some of the questions, we can certainly do that. Or if you have, I think there were ten of them, if you've read them and they're happy enough, that's okay.
Yes, Mrs. Ackman?
So I'd just say my questions on the Bursar were answered, so I can remove that cut as well.
Okay, we got that. Rich? I also just, you know, I I think a thank you to to the administration, especially Rich Rudel and all the administration. They spend a lot of time answering questions from our partners at the Board of Finance, RTM Education, RTMF and B. Dr. Adley and I will be going this week to an RTM budget F and B meeting, and then shortly thereafter, an RTM education meeting. So thank you for all the questions they've submitted as they've gone through the process. So and other partners that have submitted questions. It's a lot of work that goes on behind the scenes over and above the day job of educating our our students, but they're all important questions. And so those questions are all available. And I think at this point, all questions have been answered. So now we'll go do some of the work with some of those committees. And it will go to the Board of Finance, and they will have their public meeting also. But so we move on to next week where we will do our final round of any cuts or ads. We will make a motion to vote on those, seconded discussion and move forward to moving toward a Board of Ed budget. Any further questions or comments from the board? All right, thank you all, those of you in the audience. Thank you all those on Zoom for the tough conversation and the good debate. Much appreciated. I will move a motion to adjourn. Mrs. McCammon, second by Mr. Seeny. All those in favor, that is unanimous. Thank you, everyone. Have a good evening.